Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 12, 2023 Hoop Unified School District Board of Education Meeting. Roll call, please.
President of the Board, Robert Garcia.
Present.
Clerk of the Board, Joseph Navarro.
Present.
Trustee Karen Bradford.
Present.
Trustee Eric Ditweiler.
Present.
Trustee Melissa Regal. Record will show trustee Regal is absent this evening. Secretary of the Board, Trenton Hanson.
Present.
Paula Ford.
Present.
Dave Dubrowski.
Present.
Rosa Santos Lee.
Present.
Daniel Brooks.
Present.
Thank you, Mrs. Worley. At this time, I would like to ask Mrs. Denise Hernandez, lead us in the flag salute. And before you sit back down, please remain standing for moments of silence. Ms. Hernandez. All right, at this moment, I would like to hold a moment of silence for Mrs. Cleotha Warhop, retired district employee. Mrs. Warhop was employed as a teacher from 1966 to 1985. The board would like to express its condolences to the Warhop family. Would also like to hold a moment of silence for Mrs. Suzanne McDaniel, activity supervisor. Mr. Daniel was employed with JUSD from 2014 to 2023. The board would like to express his condolences to McDaniel family. Please be seated. At this time, we have our inspirational comment, which was delivered by Mrs. Trustee Karen Bradford.
Thank you, President Garcia. Tonight's inspirational comment comes from His Holiness, the 14th Dalai Lama, who is the Buddhist spiritual leader of the Tibetan people. He was born in Tibet 87 years ago, but has lived in exile in northern India since 1959, when the Chinese army invaded Tibet with the intent to capture him and occupy the country, which it did. He is a Nobel Peace Prize recipient whose message to the world is compassion and usefulness to others. He said, "Love and compassion are necessities, not luxuries. Without them, humanity cannot survive. So be kind whenever possible, and it is always possible." Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bradford. Onto number six, reports from closed session. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, President Garcia. First, in closed session by a vote of four to zero, the board voted to approve the resignation agreement with employee number 292438. Additionally, in closed session by unanimous vote of four to zero, the board voted to appoint Ms. Jennifer Green as the assistant principal at Patriot High School. Ms. Green is here. Will you please stand so we can acknowledge you? And now I'm going to defer to Dr. Hanson, who I believe also has reports.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Not too long ago, Mr. Dave Dubrowski informed the district that he will retire at the end of the 23-24 school year. In order to facilitate a successful one-year transition, the board has, with a four-o vote, approved the realignment of cabinet, including the following appointments: Mr. Dave Dubrowski to serve as the assistant superintendent of Expanded Learning and the Arts for the 2023-2024 school year; Mr. Daniel Brooks as the assistant superintendent of Education Services; and finally, Mrs. Denise Hernandez as the assistant superintendent of Human Resources. And I know Mrs. Hernandez is here tonight, if she would like to stand and be recognized. Thank you.
Mrs. Santos Lee.
Thank you, President Garcia. In closed session this evening, the board voted in a four-to-zero vote, agreed to a special ed settlement for case number 2023-030543, resolving all issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos Lee. Thank you all. Onto the fun part of this meeting, number seven, recognize 100 Mile Club top runners.
Right.
Mr. Dubrowski.
If our top runners can join me at the front up here, we will get started and say great things about you. And Mrs. Lubin, Ms. Betancourt, can you join me up at the front table as well? Before we talk about the accomplishments of this wonderful group of athletes up here, I want to talk just for a few minutes about the 100 Mile Club program. And we're fortunate tonight to have Kara Lubin, who is the founder and CEO of the program, with us, so she's gonna share a couple of her thoughts, and you could write there.
Hi. Hi, guys. Well, first of all, to one of the best school boards that I know around, and an incredible superintendent and cabinet, thank you for allowing your students to achieve true personal success through this program. Not only, I can tell you with 100% accuracy that not only did these kids achieve their goals, they no doubt helped others achieve their goals as well. A lot of our top runners tend to be our best coaches. After they make their goals, they help others achieve theirs. So that was really the whole point of 100 Mile Club, when I started it in 1992-93 school year. So it's 30 years ago this year. I was 22 years old in my classroom, and I decided my kids needed some way to know what success looked and felt like, because a lot of the students I was teaching had really never experienced success at school. And once they learned what success felt like through this program, through this goal of running 100 miles in a year, they sought that success in other places because they knew what they were looking for. And so 100 Mile Club is about so much more than running, and JUSD gets it. So I want to say thank you to not only you all, but to Mr. Dubrowski for championing, and also to Jamie Betancourt for being the coach of coaches here in JUSD. So thank you all so much. If we could just give all of our top runners a round of applause. And to you guys. Being a top runner is a big deal, right? You guys ran, 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 and you did so, so great. But I think the thing that I want you to remember now is that if you're seen as a top runner, you're seen as someone who can inspire and help others to achieve their goals. So as you move forward in your school career, not only have you probably discovered a little bit of a talent inside your hearts, but also this idea that you can lead other people to success as well. So thank you all for being here tonight.
And parents, parents, if you want. I was gonna say, parents, if you want to take some quick pictures, take a time, couple minutes here, real quick.
And we still have a lot more. All right, so while they're taking pictures, I'm gonna speak just for a minute about 100 Mile Club in our district. And I'm gonna start by sharing the mission of the 100 Mile Club, which is engaging and empowering kids and families to achieve a healthy lifestyle through physical activity nationwide, preventing childhood inactivity and obesity, one child, one school, and one community at a time. And that mission really speaks to us in Hoopa, because we understand the connection between physical health, emotional health, and overall health. So as Ms. Lubin mentioned, the goal is for students to run, jog, walk, or roll 100 miles over the course of the school year. Next one, yeah, thanks. There we go. One more. So in Hoopa Unified, we've been involved with 100 Mile Club for almost 10 years now as a district. And there are several things that we do to support the program and to support our students. One of the things is our open runs. So twice a week at both Rubito High School and Hoopa Valley High School, the track is open, and students and families are able to come out and run and earn miles. And those miles contribute towards their 100 miles towards the end of the year. Those activities are on the 100 Mile Club calendar, which is posted online, as well as several other volunteer activities that many of our head coaches do. And by the way, do we have any head coaches in the audience tonight from our sites? If so, can you raise your hand? I see at least a couple. Let's give them a big round of applause. And these are people that, up until this year, have volunteered their time out of the passion for physical activity to work with these students and help them earn their miles. In addition, you know, each year we have a medal ceremony at all of our schools, where students who reach that 100 mile are celebrated with their, they get their gold medal. And the students that worked really hard and didn't get a certificate, and everyone is recognized for their efforts. And then towards the end of the year, we do this, which, we haven't gotten to do this in a few years, but this is a very exciting time where we get to recognize the program and the students. Next slide. Okay, this is a little bit hard to see, but another thing that came about over the last 10 years is building tracks at all of our elementary schools, so our students had a good quality surface to be able to run their miles. And in that chart, it shows sort of in 2014, we had like one track. And then if you go up the bars to 2022, we now have tracks at every one of our elementary schools and at Del Sol, as well as at our middle school and high schools. So the infrastructure is there for our students to be able to achieve. Next slide. So things were rolling right along in 2018, 2019, and then we hit 2020. And you know, the world sort of changed for a little while. And last year, we were able to come back to in-person education, but it was a rocky time. And so some schools were able to maintain or return to 100 Mile Club, and others weren't. And this year, however, we really set out to bring the program back and to really support it. And we were fortunate to have the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, which is a wonderful budget to expand learning after school. And what that allowed us to do, which was, is to fund the memberships for all of our students. So these t-shirts and these medals, we were able to pay that cost for all of them, every student that wanted to do so. We were also able to provide a stipend for the head coach at every elementary school, so that they weren't just volunteering their time, they were getting a little bit of compensation to be able to do that and to have more activities. We were able, for the first time, to have a district-wide head coach, which is Mrs. Betancourt over here, who has been a wonderful support for all the coaches and all the school site programs. And Mrs. Betancourt, is there anything you would like to say?
I wanted to say hello, say thank you to Mr. Dubrowski and to the board for supporting this phenomenal program. I came into the program as a parent of my own children, and then as a participant with some of the other head coaches back here in the back, and now is a coach at my school and now representing the district. And thanks to your generosity and allowing every single child in this district to have the opportunity to be a part of this program is why it is going to continue to be more successful each and every year. We spent this year getting all the elementary schools off the ground and running, and giving a little extra support to those veteran schools. And with all of the support from the board and the district, this program is just gonna continue to be wonderful and excel. And like Kara had said before, it's about so much more than just running. It's about goal-setting and helping one another, and it is absolute the best thing that you could bring to this district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And then one other thing we were able to do this year, when we first started, like we would go to our open runs, and we printed these little stacks of like three-by-five papers. And as the kids would run a lap, we all had markers, and we would just put a little dot on their wrist. And at the end of the night, we would count up the dots, and we would take a little piece of paper, and we would translate that into miles, and we would hand it to them, and they would have to take it to their teacher the next day, and their teacher would have to add it onto the chart and keep track of it. It was a bit cumbersome. But now, we've joined the 21st century, and we were able to purchase 10 scanners at every school site. And so the kids have a card that they can scan every time they run a lap, and it automatically goes into the computer system, and it automatically adds their miles for them. So it's made it a much more streamlined process. We've been excited about that. Next slide. And here's one example I wanted to give of someone who really was able to take the program and bring it to its former glory and more. Mr. Warner, who is in the back right there, Mr. Warner, wave. So his class ran 4,569 miles. He had over 27, 27 of his 29 students had over 100 miles. And one of them didn't come until like February, March, so that didn't really count. And he had two students who did more than 300 miles. So you know, this is one of the ways that, you know, our students, that is one healthy class right there, right? All those miles. And these are lifelong habits that our kids will take with them. So I want to thank Mr. Warner for that, for his work and the dedication, and how he was able to bring that out in his students. So thank you. Next slide. Okay, so this is the totals, and so it's hard to see the numbers, but as you can see, we went up. The second to the last one is 2019. So we were cruising along and getting more miles in every year, and then, you know, COVID hit. And this year, we were able to almost return to the highest numbers we've had before. We're getting there. We're back to around 2017, 2018 numbers. And we are confident that that's only gonna grow, and that we're gonna surpass those numbers in the next few years. So we're really excited to see the program beginning to flourish as it has in the past, and we know that the future is bright. Next one. Oh, that's it. That's an old slide, never mind. We can take it off. All right. So now, we're gonna recognize our students. So these are the students from each school that were the top two mile earners for that school. So not everyone was able to be here tonight, because, you know, it's summer. And so we're really grateful for those of you that were willing to come out and be recognized. And I'm gonna read out the school name and the top two mile earners. And as I read your name, if you can kind of raise your hand so that people can see who you are and give you a nice round of applause. So starting with Camino Real, who completed 50,880 miles. Our top runner was Jedrick Johnson in third grade with 266 miles. Is Jedrick here? And we had a tie for second place with both Kayden Patel and Charlie Herbert, who both had 211 miles. Kayden, Charlie, are you here? All right, from Del Sol, which had 21,000 miles, Mason Fanning ran 250 miles. And Iker Ruiz had 165 miles. From Glen Avon with 57,800 miles, Risa Avila with 160 miles. And Arle Bruseno with 150 miles. From Granite Hill with 22,702 miles, Anis Villa, a fourth grader, who ran 401 miles. Anis, are you here? And Seth Kibler, who ran 166 miles. From Aina Arbuckle with 19,643 miles, Ezekiel Maldonado had 153 miles. And Emily Marquetto had 136 miles. At Indian Hills with 16,315 miles, Dorian Peralta had 106 miles. And Andrea Tabor had 76 miles. Mission Bell, Isaac Sanchez had 129 miles. And Angel Madrigal Sanchez had 108 miles. Pacific Avenue, Eben Davis had 87 miles. And Brooklyn Chavez had 79 miles. At Pedley Elementary, Christian Navarro had 185 miles. And Noah Juarez had 170 miles. At Peralta, Nathan Ramirez had 144 miles. And Denise Canseco had 134 miles. At Rustic Lane, Israel Chavez had 318 miles. And Leonardo Palomares had 301 miles. At Sky Country, Fatima Guardado had 200 miles. And Evelyn Garcia had 182 miles. At Stone Avenue, Catherine Castillo had 118 miles. And Adrian Hernandez had 67 miles. At Sunny Slope, Javier Arceo had 137 miles. And Robert Peña had 131 miles. At Tross Street, Sofia Lopez had 225 miles. And Franco Salazar had 222 miles. At Van Buren, Dario Espinoza had 235 miles. And Braden de la Cruz had 158 miles. And at West Riverside, there were three, Ricardo Salinas Espinoza, Aiden Betancourt, and Gustavo Gutierrez with 35 miles. And Raymond Beal with 30 miles. And before we give all those students a round of applause, just the students whose names I read alone ran 5,884 miles. And that is, if you were to go from the coast of California to the coast of Maine and back, that's about 5,884 miles. So congratulations to these, they put a ton of miles in. And the total mileage for the district was 410,742 miles, which is enough to go to the moon and almost all the way back, really close to almost all the way back. So congratulations to all of our students. All right, as our top athletes are taking their seats, can we give them one more big round of applause? Okay, boys and girls, you can go back to your seats. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dubrowski. Thank you, Ms. Lubin and Ms. Betancourt. Coaches, parents, students, thank you very much. Very exciting. Yes, sir. Mrs. Bradford.
I'm curious, Mr. Warner, do you still do your epic run? I came and walked around the track. Thank you very much for your inspiration. And Mrs. Lubin and your assistant, this is fabulous. Thank you for inspiring our students.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to number eight, recognize 2022-2023 school resource officers. School resource officers. Dr. Hanson.
Thank you, President Garcia. This evening, the board and administration would like to recognize the valuable contributions and assistance of our school resource officers and the administration of the Hoopa Valley Sheriff's Station during this past year. So I'd like to invite the board to come on down, and we'll present some certificates. We're always so grateful to have our partners in law enforcement at our schools, and I know our parents and our community are so appreciative of their efforts. And so we'd like to recognize them this evening. I know that some are not with us tonight, and so we will give those certificates to Sergeant Avila for him to give. But first, I'd like to recognize Sergeant Aaron Avila. Deputy John Plager. Deputy Nayeli Hernandez. Deputy Bobby Montanes. Deputy Antonio Navarez. Deputy Jeremy Dorch. Deputy Christopher Johnson. Deputy Robbie Robinson. Also would like to thank, I know they're not with us tonight, Lieutenant Don Williamson and Captain Michael Kohler. So again, it's our sincere, with sincere gratitude and appreciation that we acknowledge our partners in law enforcement for all that they do at our schools and in support of our administration there, our students and our community. So once again, thank you for all of your efforts.
All right, thank you again, there are soros. All right, on to item number nine, recognize funding for school facility program grants. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you, President Garcia. The State Office of Public School Instruction notified the district that grant funding for the West Riverside Elementary School new construction project has been awarded in the amount of $6,416,395. And also, there's a corrected amount of $4,710,563, which is 540,000 more than the original reported award that is also being awarded for West Riverside Elementary School. And to date, the district has received 61.6 million in school facility program grants from the state.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Now, that's 61 million dollars. That's on top of the 144 million dollar bond. Excellent. All right. Any questions or comments on that? All right. So we're on to number 10, recognize funding from the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. The State Department also notified the district that funding from the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant has been awarded to the district for a total amount of $100,000.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Number eleven, board member comments. We'll start with you, Dr. Ditweiler.
Well, thank you, President Garcia. This is one of the most important board meetings of the year as we hold public hearings on both the district's budgets and our local control and accountability plan, or LCAP. The JUSD LCAP follows a template defined by the California State Department of Education, which is designed to lead districts through the process of reporting and reflecting on outcomes data and community survey responses. This is to inform the setting of goals and the planning of actions, as well as how to pay for them. We look at what worked, what didn't, and what we're gonna do about it. One of the sections of the LCAP is devoted to explaining how the district engages its educational partners. The surest sign of engagement is willingness to devote time or treasure to a cause. I am pleased to note that the donations agenda item is especially long this time, and that many of the donations are incentives to encourage students to attend school. This is clearly a need, given our thirty-six point six percent chronically absent rate. This means that more than a third of our students are missing more than ten percent of their school days. That's one day every two weeks, and that's enough to leave them missing essential rungs in the ladder of concepts being taught. I want to thank both our community partners for recognizing this need and stepping up to help meet it, and to observe that their generosity is evidence of successful community engagement. Chronic absenteeism is not just Eurupa's problem. The statewide rate more than doubled from fourteen to thirty percent between twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. COVID, no doubt, prompted a change in the default reaction of parents to their children's complaints of not feeling well. But I don't think that's the only factor at play. Ten percent fewer of our secondary students reported that they felt safe in school in twenty twenty-three than did in twenty twenty-one. Maslow tells us that we can't expect people who don't feel safe to be engaged participants. Both their learning and their behavior are likely to suffer, and we risk entering a downward spiral of contagious antisocial behavior. Both community input and social science theory suggests that increased mental health support and social emotional learning are appropriate. I am happy to report that our LCAP calls for both. Humans are social animals, and our individual mental well-being is tied to our relations with others. This is not just a modern realization. The Pauline Epistles are full of admonitions about the importance of considering one's role in society. Social emotional learning is about developing the self-awareness, self-control, and interpersonal skills needed to be a good student, citizen, and colleague. Sometimes people wonder how social emotional learning fits into the received rubric of reading, writing, and arithmetic, also known as the three Rs. The non-standard English should be a clue to the early nineteenth century origins of that label. It proved inadequate for the industrial era and is certainly inadequate in the information age, where almost everything relies on collaboration. I am happy to report that the faculty and staff at JUSD are collaborating to create an environment that fosters learning without limits. Thank you, President Garcia.
Thank you, Trustee Ditweiler. Trustee Bradford.
Thank you, President Garcia. Regarding our moment of silence tonight, first I would like to say thank you to the Warhop and Kelly families for the blessing of your marvelous matriarch to our community. I listened to Mrs. Warhop just two months ago at the Allen Chapel African Methodist Episcopal Church as she described living in Riverside in the nineteen forties and the racism she encountered. These families come from a fine, courageous woman in our community as the beneficiary of her life experiences and contributions here. Thank you again. I attended our youth court recognition recently. It's a fabulous program between our district and the Riverside County Court System with volunteer attorneys to provide an alternative for minor infractions or offenses by our students. The students' behaviors are evaluated and judged by their peers who have enjoyed their own remediation experiences so much that many have returned as volunteers throughout middle school or high school. Those have turned into wonderful role models for their peers. I attended the Student of the Year Recognition Dinner. It was quite a moving ceremony as each student, all girls, I might add, was introduced by her teacher who described her qualities. The student then spoke a bit about herself and thanked the significant teachers or school mentors in her life, as well as then introducing her family. A separate award was given in honor of our local deputy, Isaiah Cordero, who was killed on duty last December. It was given to a young man going into law enforcement who looks to be a fine tribute to Deputy Cordero's memory. I attended the Young Authors Day at Indian Hills Elementary School. The whole school makes quite an event of it. It was a fun event for me, and as a professional writer, I always encourage the students that it is possible to make a career of writing. I visited Mr. Richard Leach's auto shop class at Harupa Valley High School. I watched two girls balance a tire while some boys tested a battery and others checked a head gasket. I told them that my own sons worked on their skills in that very shop, and now one is making more than two hundred thousand dollars a year, and the other one is doing pretty well too. So, whatever they choose, I said, be serious, stick with it, and those skills can be the foundation of a career that can pay exceptionally well without a college degree. I attended the awards presentation at Nueva Vista, Nueva Vista High School, as well as officiating at its graduation ceremony with the Adult Education School. These are my joy to attend. I alternately smile and cry my way through them because every student has a story to tell, and all the teachers work so very hard to get them whatever they need to graduate. This year, we had a husband and wife graduating at the same time. I presented at Harupa Valley High School's graduation, too. I'm also involved with several of the district's school gardens because I am a certified master gardener with Riverside County. I took about ninety donated vegetable plants and flowers to Nueva Vista High School, Pedley Elementary, and Sunny Slope Elementary. I was told that, I was told that one class of students at Pedley sing to their plant, their plants to encourage them to grow. Isn't that a wonderful way of teaching compassion and kindness by that teacher? I also was told that a student at Nueva Vista is so shy that she seldom volunteers to talk in class, but the excitement of having new plants brought her out of her shell to talk about them. Finally, I visited Rubido during finals week when a friend of mine took two of her miniature horses to visit the drop-in Mental Health Wellness Wednesday during lunch. Her outreach is called Happiness on Four Hooves. The horses are about the size of large dogs. I have a picture of them here if you'd like to see it later. And she usually takes her horses to senior nursing homes to cheer up the old people by letting them pet them or to take them to college campuses during finals weeks to reduce student stress. The end. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Bradford. Trustee Navarro.
Thank you, President Garcia. I know we got a long meeting, so I'll make it quick here. I'm just proud of the Hundred Mile Club in our district and participating in that, seeing the kids so up here and proud. And many of them are probably their first school board meeting they've ever been to, so that was great to see them up here. You took my, you're my moon. I was doing math up here, but I'm glad you said that to the moon and back almost. That was, that was great, Dave. Big shout out to the resource officers. I know their job's not easy, but I feel comfortable knowing that they're there keeping our students safe in our district, so a big shout out to them. I also attended two graduations, one for Rubido High School and one for Patriot High School. We have some smart kids, listening to those valid Victorians talk. And, you know, you think people get nervous, public education, these eighteen-year-old kids speaking in front of thousands of people. They didn't miss a beat. They didn't miss a drop. They had well-thought-out speeches, plans, and they were hilarious. They were funny. They were serious. They were uplifting. They were motivational. So I always get excited every year to attend the graduations. It was great. I look forward to it every year. And then lastly, we have Father's Day coming up on Sunday. And, you know, thinking about Father's Day, growing up, I had two heroes. One was Hulk Hogan, and when he picked up Andre the Giant and body slammed him, it was one of those memories as a kid that I'll never forget. That sticks to me to this day was, was that. The second hero was my dad. My dad preached education. And some of my whole life, he encouraged us to do and further our education. So I just had two quotes to leave you off here with for Father's Day. It was one, "My father gave me the greatest gift anyone could ever give another person. He believed in me." And lastly, being a father now of two girls, I think one of the best ones I read was, "Having a kid is like falling in love for the first time when you're twelve-year-old, but it's every day." Thank you. That's it.
Very nice. Thank you, Trustee Navarro. Now, piggybacking on what Trustee Navarro said, Mr. Dubrowski, I was thinking more, I was in the Navy, so I was thinking more sixteen times around the earth. It's about four hundred thousand miles. But thank you for that report, Mr. Dubrowski, and I just had the opportunity this last week to attend the DAC and the DLEC meeting, combined meeting. Mr. Blake is here tonight. And also Mrs. Gomez is part of that. We had a presentation with Mr. Campos and Mrs. Gonzalez. Very nice. Great group of folks and very important work. And Mr. Blake, thank you for doing such a great job facilitating that group and enjoy it every couple of months. Hundred Mile Club, as my colleagues have said, fantastic program. Look forward to that every year now that we're, we're out of, kind of out of COVID, I guess. Congratulations, Mrs. Green. Very confident in you. The board has so much confidence in you. Congratulations in your promotion there. We look forward to your success. And Mrs. Hernandez, welcome to the governance team and board welcomes you. Look forward to you serving up on the board here with, with the board on the governance team. And of course, Mr. Dubrowski, I can't say enough about Mr. Dubrowski. I've known him, I don't know, twenty years. I don't know how long it's been. And you've kind of been a mentor to me, I think, a little bit when I was a parent here, and appreciate all you've done, not just for me, but for the board and for this district. And you still got a year left here with us, but look forward to all your success in the future. And finally, I did attend the Student of the Year with Trustee Bradford, Trustee Ditweiler. Great students. I mean, it was just a fantastic event. And it wasn't just about academics. It was, it was about their soul, and it was really fantastic event. And enjoyed that. Hopefully next year we'll have another successful event. And finally, the graduations were fantastic. I got to do Rubido this year, and it was great. And that's all I have for this evening, so we'll move on from there. Number twelve, Mrs. Warley, do we have any requests to speak?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, okay. We'll move on to item D. Administrative reports and written communications, D1. Here, PAR's Post-Employment Benefit Trust. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. So we have Ms. Rachel Sanders, Vice President of Consulting from Public Agency Retirement Services, otherwise known as PARs, that's here this evening. And she's going to present to the board some information on the benefits of establishing a post-employment benefits trust. And later in the agenda, we do have a resolution on the, on the agenda as an item to establish that trust.
All right. Great. Thank you. And good evening, members of the board. Glad to be with you. Evening to cabinet members as well. As mentioned, my name is Rachel Sanders with PARs, Public Agency Retirement Services. And I have actually presented to this board in the past on a different program, Early Retirement Incentives. But as Paula mentioned, my objective for tonight is to walk you through the Post-Employments Benefits Trust. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and get started. And let me start on the next slide by just going over the different members of the team involved. Oh, perfect. Okay, I will control. It sounds good. There we go. All right. So at the top there, you have PARs. So again, we've worked with the district in a different capacity. But as you can see, PARs does serve as the trust administrator and consultant of a combination one fifteen trust. So we actually started the very first school district to join, in fact, the very first agency to join our one fifteen trust was Ontario Montclair, not too far from here, back in the early two thousands. And so we are actually the pioneers and leading providers of these programs for both pre-funding OPEB and pension in a one fifteen trust. So PARs really serves as the quarterback of the team. We have a lot of experience and expertise in this realm, and we really would serve as the district's main point of contact for all of the administrative-related work with this program. Couple roles that we don't serve include number one trustee, which is, falls to US Bank on the bottom left-hand corner there. US Bank, fifth largest bank in the nation, provides all of the oversight protection for this one fifteen trust program as the plan fiduciary, and they serve as the custodian of the assets. So when the district sends in money or takes money out of the trust, that runs through US Bank, not through PARs. And then last, but certainly not least, we are fortunate to partner with Vanguard on the investments for this program. So Vanguard, recognizable name for many. They're the low-cost investment leader. And again, we are proud to partner with them on this program to offer a very low-cost way for districts to invest these funds. Oops, got ahead of myself here. So as we mentioned, this program is structured as a combination trust. And so we do have IRS approval in the form of a private letter ruling that speaks to the tax-exempt status of this trust. And it allows districts and other public agencies to pre-fund OPEB, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, otherwise known as your retiree medical liabilities, and/or pension within the same one fifteen trust umbrella. So in essence, you can address two different, very important liabilities under the same umbrella, but they are accounted for separately because they are two separate liabilities and do have different accounting standards. So the trust is irrevocable in nature, meaning that once money is set aside for either OPEB or pension, it is earmarked and insured to only be used for that intended purpose. So you're really shoring up that these assets will be used to address these really important ongoing liabilities. You'll see that we do actually offer the OPEB program in consultation with CSBA. We've been partnered with them again since the early two thousands. And then we also pioneered the pension pre-funding side of this later on. So starting with the OPEB side of the trust, for again, those that are less familiar with OPEB liabilities, these are again your retiree medical liabilities. So the district does offer a generous retiree medical package for its employees, which is great that you can offer that to employees. And so starting to set money aside now to address these liabilities is something that's financially prudent, but also will help ensure the long-term health of this program. And so what you'll see on this next slide is information that we pulled from what's called an actuarial valuation. So I won't go too far into the weeds because I don't want to create too much confusion. But ultimately, this is a report that gets updated every two years for the district and speaks to your liabilities. So you can see the OPEB liability as of your last report was right around fifty-one million dollars. And in tackling this ongoing liability, the district's been using what's known as a pay-as-you-go method, effectively paying those retiree medical benefits directly from the general fund when they are due to employees. Now, one of the biggest benefits of pre-funding OPEB assets comes in the form of what's called a higher discount rate. So you'll see in the top bar there, the pay-as-you-go discount rate is three point seven two percent. The actuary is assigning you that number because the returns on your general fund investments long-term are really not expected to generate that much income. Now, when you move assets out of your general fund and into a one fifteen trust program like this, because now you have the opportunity to invest with Vanguard, you also have the opportunity to invest in portfolios that do have some level of stock exposure, which increases your earning potential on those monies. So that's why you see a higher discount rate. And ultimately, why that's important to you at the district is that you'll see the rule of thumb at the bottom. For every one percent increase in the discount rate, your unfunded liabilities actually decrease by ten to twelve percent. So in this example, when we're seeing an increase, you know, of potentially three percent in your discount rate, that could impact your liabilities by decreasing them as much as thirty to thirty-six percent. So it's a very meaningful step to take to start pre-funding these liabilities. So why pre-fund OPEB? Again, a lot of those reasons I just went over, you will see a huge benefit in your future actuarial evaluations. Again, you'll see a positive impact to your liabilities. This is also something that GFOA, which is the, the accounting standards for the nation, recognizes. This is also something that GFOA, which is the accounting standards for the nation recognizes as best practice. So a lot of public agencies like to do it for that reason. Beyond that, you have the benefit of again securely setting money aside, being able to invest it to get a higher rate of return and grow those assets. And again, that money is there when you need it for those retiree medical costs. So you can reimburse yourself for your annual costs if and when you need it. So it's not locked up. It's just ensured that it's there for that intended purpose. Now switching gears to the pension side of the trust. So there's been a lot of conversations, I'm sure, about what's been going on with CalPERS and CalSTRS, the two pension systems for the state of California. And this chart really just shows you how drastically the rates have changed over time. If we're looking at where you started back in 2015, 2016, and where things are anticipated to go through 28, 29, you can see that both for CalSTRS and CalPERS, the district's costs are dramatically rising. Now, CalPERS is also actuarially set, so those costs are even a little bit more dramatic. CalSTRS is statutorily set, so that does flatline a bit. But the governor did just announce in his most recent May revise and budget proposal, there's no pension relief coming. So again, seeing that these costs are going up and knowing that this will impact future payments into both systems, again, this is a way to start setting money aside for those costs as well. And why pre-fund pension obligations? So a lot of similar reasons to OPEB again, except for in this case, you're setting money aside to be dedicated to deal with those rising pension costs. You still have the benefit of investing in the trust. You can actually invest differently for OPEB versus pension, dependent upon your objectives and time horizon for the money. So again, you're ensuring that when those rising costs do come, hopefully it won't impact your budget as dramatically. It's really meant to be sort of a stabilization or smoothing tool, knowing that you can draw down from those funds in the trust once those rising costs do come in the future. And then moving along to the Vanguard investment options. So again, Vanguard has partnered with us to create an array of options specifically for districts and other public agencies to do pre-funding of both OPEB and pension. So this next slide shows you the four different options available to the district. Starting at the most conservative fixed income strategy, this would be most comparable with how you're investing in your general fund currently. And then you can see as we move to the right and then down across, there is an increased exposure of equity or stocks in these portfolios. So oftentimes we're asked, what do most districts choose to invest in? I would say for pension, the conservative strategy is the most commonly chosen. And for OPEB, the balanced strategy is the most commonly chosen. But that being said, we have districts that have chosen every single one of these strategies. So again, it really comes down to your individual needs and flexibility to choose what's going to make the best sense to help you achieve those objectives. The other thing I do want to point out, it's teeny tiny on the screen, but hopefully you can see below each of these pie charts, there are also return expectations. And so you can see ranging anywhere, let's take the conservative. At a five year, they're projecting over 5% returns, over 30 years, close to 60, excuse me, close to 6% returns. And then certainly that goes up as you increase the stock exposure. So you can really see the potential benefits of being able to diversify how you're investing these funds again, to help you grow these important assets over time. And then of course, we do want to be fully transparent with the fees for this program. So this slide goes over the fees for the three companies that I mentioned at the beginning. The PARs fees are at 25 basis points for any assets under 10 million. 25 basis points is 0.25% of total assets in the trust. We are very fortunate in that Vanguard has set up a fee structure wherein not only are your district's assets counted, but all assets for everyone investing in Vanguard are accounted for. So that said, their current investment management fees are two basis points or 0.02%. They've actually decreased by 60% since we started partnering with them. So they can go even lower. So it's true economies of scale. And then last but not least, we have US Bank. Their fees are based on the strategy chosen. And on average, for I would say the conservative strategy, the most commonly chosen one, they're right around three basis points, 0.03%. So all in for all three companies, you're looking at right around 30 basis points for the fees for this program, right around 0.3% of total assets. No other cost besides that. And so again, really great opportunity for the district to start setting money aside and investing these liabilities. All right. I know that's a lot of information to digest in a short period of time. So I would be very happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Any questions for the board? Trustee Bradford.
In your growth fund, is any of the equity involved in international stocks?
Good question. So Vanguard does diversify across a large variety of different types of share classes. So they do have some exposure to international. Ultimately, again, they have to serve as a prudent investor. And so that includes investing again across different classes, different types of funds, so that they are fully diversifying. I know that sometimes they make changes politically based on what's going on, like I believe they removed some Russian stocks, but they ultimately do manage those funds to maintain diversity.
Generally, what percentage?
In the international, you know what? I don't have that information with me tonight, but I can certainly send that over to Paula.
Okay, I would be interested to see if it's weighted more in the Nikkei or European.
Sure. Yeah, I can absolutely get that for you.
Trustee Navarro.
Thank you, President Garcia. Definitely a lot of information. I'm just curious, Mrs. Ford, what do you think about kind of the presentation and any questions that we should be asking or something? How you feel what kind of, I know she gave us a few options to choose from. I think this is the first time I've had this issue come up before me. So I'm just curious on.
So we had, we had looked at this pension and OPEB trust a while ago. But at the time, we just weren't in a situation where we would be able to have the funds to end, to put into that trust. So now we are in a situation where we have some funding that we could devote and dedicate to that trust. And that would get us, remove us from this pay as you go, which could be very volatile for us, depending on what happens with, especially with STIRS and PERS and those increases. So this is a good time for that. And as far as the actual makeup of the trust, you know, for us, you know, we're a conservative district. We've always kind of been been conservative with our with our funding and with our budgets. So for us, we would, you know, fall more into that conservative or our balance, but likely conservative funds.
And if things change in a few years where we, you know, we don't have that money or we get back to where things are tied again, are we obligated to keep putting that in or how does that work?
Great question. So one thing I want to stress is that this is a completely flexible trust. And so there's no minimum required contribution, no required annual ongoing contribution. So we've worked with agencies that have contributed once and never again. We've worked with others that have set up policies to continue contributions. But ultimately, this is meant to, again, meet your objectives. And so when it comes time to withdraw funds, again, you're able to take actually your current year costs for OPEB or pension plus one year back. So that can actually be a pretty significant amount, especially when it comes to your pension costs. So yeah, you do have that flexibility.
With no penalties, right?
Correct. No penalties. That's what the trust is for.
Yeah, so it seems more of, it's a lack of penalties, but more of a incentive of the more that we invest, the more that we'll get back and lower the percentage.
Absolutely. Certainly, if you have time on your side, you get the benefit of longer investment horizon. But but certainly, it's it's sort of a rainy day fund in that if you need the money for either OPEB or pension, it's there when you need it.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Ditweiler.
Um, I guess I missed it, but but why are we paying you five times more than we're paying the other players in this game? The 0.25 as opposed to the 0.05? What are you doing for us?
Uh, so again, PARs is the company that actually established the trust and does all of the ongoing administration for the trust. And so we work collectively with our partners to ensure that we do everything from processing, you know, the setup of the trust. We worked with the IRS again to get that private letter ruling. We establish the trust. We work with attorneys to make sure that all of our legal documents are in place for the trust. We work with the district to get all of the paperwork in terms of the administration, how to send money in. We coordinate with our partners to get the money out. We coordinate ongoing meetings with our partners as well. And so we're really sort of the quarterback of the team and really the main company that you would be working with. So while of course, we do again, work with US Bank and Vanguard for their respective roles, we certainly would do the heavy lifting for this program. That's, no, I wouldn't say that's true. Certainly upfront, again, we would help the district establish the trust. But on an ongoing basis, we are the company that will be doing all of the reporting. So we do all the statement preparation. We send to you all of the quarterly statements actually from Vanguard as well. We schedule annual meetings with staff and present to the board if needed. So we are a partner with the district and all of our member agencies throughout the year and doing all of the ongoing administration. So you will continue to hear from us much farther beyond from the start, as long as you're in this program. PARs will be again, the administrator that your district would be working with.
Right. Trustee Bradford, do you have another question?
On the OPEB, is there a time limit by which they can be used like a section 125?
So with the OPEB, no, there's no time limit for when you can use those funds. So ultimately, you can set aside these funds as long as you want to. And again, once you're ready to take a dispersment from the trust, you can take your current year's cost plus one year back. And so we would coordinate that with you to get you that money, but there's no time limit for how long you can keep the funds in there.
Okay, so there's no use it or lose it?
Correct, absolutely not.
Okay, what happens if the employee dies? Does those, but what happens to those, that money? Does it go to a beneficiary?
So that would actually be not at this level. So that would change your actuarial valuations. It's more so at the plan level. That might be a question for Paula. This is really just to pre-fund whatever those liabilities are in those ongoing reports that your actuary does. But if there are changes at the plan level, that would be something that would be reflected in your actuarial valuation.
Okay, so it sounds actuarially speaking that the family loses out on that money.
I don't know how the plan is structured, so Paula, I'll defer to you on that.
No, that would, that would be, that would be something internally that we would, that we would be working with from the district. That wouldn't have anything to do with the pension trust at all.
Okay, but I mean, if somebody put a significant amount of money into the OPEB and died the next year, what would happen to that money?
No, the the funding is coming from the district. We are funding the OPEB. We are funding the trust.
Okay, so there's no, there's no liability to the employee in that case.
No, no change in anything that happens with the employee.
Oh, cool. Okay, that makes me feel better. Thank you.
Right, you have questions? I just have a question. Mrs. Ford, I think. So as far as audits, this is like part of our financial audit every year. This will be part of that.
Yes, so so this is part of our, our, our audit, which identifies our liabilities. And so the OPEB, the pension liability, as well as the OPEB liability is always on our audit reports. And again, they, you know, they indicate that we are a pay as you go. That does make it a little, like I said, a little more volatile for us and a volatile for our budget. So one of the things that Rachel did not mention was that when we go out for issuing bonds, one of the things that they look at is our credit. And having a pre-funded trust, like a 115 trust, that actually reduces our liability, which helps us to get a better credit rating.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ford. Mr. Bradford.
So are you saying we carry this on the books as a potential liability?
This is actually carried on our books as an asset.
Really?
Yes.
Whoa, that's why I'm not an accountant. I can spell any number you want, though.
You know, because we're pre-funding a liability that exists, but we're funding it with asset.
Oh, 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 that's it. Okay, that's right. Thank you. You wouldn't guess I have three securities licenses, would you?
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. All right, so we're on to D2, Facilities Updates. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight, I'd like to share a quick update on our Measure EE projects that our Planning and Development Department has managed since the inception of the bond passing back in, believe it or not, 2014. That's how long ago it was. So first, I just want to share the, just the fun things, because I don't get to share a lot of pictures. So I'm really excited about being able to do that. I share a lot of numbers, but not a lot of pictures. So as you can, as you can see, looking at these, these are some great projects that we've been able to complete using either directly using Measure EE bond funds, or we've been able to complete them by getting matching state funding. So really excited about those. And then two, I'm going to talk a little bit about two projects that were currently in progress. So Harupa Middle School site work, new addition and modernization. And the, this project is funded out of a combination of Measure EE and state facility grants. It's also, the classroom modernizations are happening right now. This building was finished and opened in fall of 2022. So really excited about that project. And then we have Tross Street Elementary School Modernization Project, which will also be a combination of some new construction as well as classroom modernizations. And this project is estimated to be complete in the fall of 2025. And this is really a full remodel of that campus. So very excited about that project. So just a real quick look at the Measure EE accomplishments. You can see there's been several modernizations that we've been able to accomplish, over 250,000 square feet. We've had a number of additional classrooms that have been added, the two stories, CT programs that we've supported, athletic fields and new playgrounds. We wanted to make sure that we touched every campus in some way with the Measure EE funds, so we've been able to do that. We also with the non-EE, non-EE projects, meaning that we were able to generate the funds from Measure EE, but we're using the state facility funds. Those are over to the right. That's what I mentioned, Tross Street, Harupa Middle Schools Modernization, and also Rubito, the Rubito High School Concert Hall, which is just a wonderful, wonderful venue. So yeah, overall, for Measure EE, we had the $144 million bond. And we have expended all but 1% of those, or we've uncovered them into contracts. So that 1% will be expended starting in the 2024, sorry, 2023, 24 year. I'm already working on the next year after that. So looking at the 2020 Master Plan Needs list by age, I highlighted those. And I know you have seen this list before, but I highlighted those schools that are due or past due for modernization. So we still have a lot of needs, 326 million. I think that's 300, yep, 326 million of needs that we need to, to look at for our schools and make sure that we continue with our facilities program. So as I'm sure you've been watching, there's a potential for state school facility bond in 2024. AB 247 is currently, actually has passed the assembly. It's in the Senate. And they are, they have referred it to committee. And it looks like that will be on the 2024 statewide election. They haven't determined whether that would be the March election or the November election. But in the fiscal comments, it does mention November. So I will, you know, we'll, we'll probably know soon. But that looks like there's no legislative opposition. So that looks like that will pass through the legislature. And then it would then move forward to go on the ballot, on the ballot in 2024. And, and just remembering and reminding that if, if that passes, all right, there's a friend here. If that passes and the school district would, school districts would be required to have matching local facility bond funds in order to tap in. Sorry. In order to tap in to that, to that bond money, to the state bond money, which as we mentioned earlier, 60, we've received over $61 million in state facility funds. So there's an opportunity for the district to, because we are nearing completion of our Measure EE projects and funds, there's an opportunity for us to look forward to potentially putting a general obligation bond, local general obligation bond on the ballot in 2024. But in order to do that, one of the first steps would be polling the community to identify, you know, what is resonating with the community, what type of projects, how receptive they are. And that would be something that we will bring to, our plan is we will bring that to the board June 26th to enter it into an agreement to be able to move forward with looking at polling and seeing if we are in a position to be able to. and seeing if we are in a position to be able to go forward with the 2024, um, bond. And then I wanted to share that as part of our master plan, we also had input from students. And so I couldn't leave without a picture of students. So I started off with great facilities and then the picture of students, which shows why we, we want to make our facilities great.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Any questions? Trustee Navarro.
That's a good question. Is admission metal?
Thanks, Robin.
Trustee Navarro. Thank you. So when it comes to matching funds, um, so that would just come out of our general fund, where we'd have to decide, could we use like one-time money or how does that work when it comes to matching the funds for that, or it has to be from the bond?
So yeah, in order for us to, we would not have enough general fund to be able to match, um, you know, what, what would be needed for a facility project like a modernization. So in order to actually have local funds, you would have to pass a general obligation bond. And that's how districts do it. When, when you look at over time, um, it, it's 65% of the, of the school facility funding in California is coming from general obligation bonds.
And if, I'm sure some districts fail at that, right? Not every district's able to match that. Does that mean that 14 billion gets to spread out more through the, the districts who are able to obtain that? Like, do we get more money then if that happens?
Yes. Yeah. So if, if you locally have the funding, you're able to put your applications in, apply for those grants. But if you don't have local funding, then you, you just don't even have an application to submit.
Okay. So we would need 160 million and match that to be able to get, uh, updated. I think it was like 327 million to get.
Well, and, and we only have a, a certain amount of bonding capacity as well. So we know within our community, we likely can't get to that 326.
Yeah.
But we can get closer.
Okay.
And we can continue our program and continue our projects.
Okay. And do we work with the local city council with any of that? Or is that something just all done by our own and, and raising that? Or I didn't know if city council had input or we worked partner with them at all or?
No, it's just all, um, yeah.
Force of roads. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Trustee DeWaller.
So this means that we would be adding our, um, bond measure to the ballot at the same time that the state one is on, asking voters to pay, to increase their taxes twice in one year?
Potentially. Yes. Well, yes. Yeah. The state, the state bonds wouldn't be an increase on the, it wouldn't be an increase like to your property taxes or anything like that. It would not be. Your local bonds would, would be an increase to property taxes, but not your state bond.
Trustee Bradford.
Mrs. Ford, on the following page report, there's an arrow next to Pedley. And the portable edition, what does that mean? Oh, um, on the page after this photo, the Measure EE Budget Report.
Ah, that was a, that was a, that was a hidden page. You found a hidden page.
I apologize.
So I think that, so part of Pedley was not using Measure EE. So I think that that was what that was, uh,
Oh.
describing. So.
Even though it says it's on the Measure EE Budget Report.
Mm-hmm. But that was why that little.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah. That was the reason for the arrow.
Thank you.
So just clarified, Ms. Ford. So the last bond was 144 million and we've been able to match with state funds, 61 million.
Yeah. So, you know, almo, almost just, I think just shy of 206 million dollars.
So, um, if we pass the bond in order to be able to have matching funds from the state bond, do we have to do it at the same time? Or the same year or the following year? What's the timeline on that?
Um, we don't have to do it at the same time. However, remember when, when, when the state passes a bond, like the, the state is now out of money. They have no more state facility funding to be able to, um, you know, accept applications, you know? So the applications that are in there now, they're going through those, they're paying what they have left. And then after that, there will be no more funds. That's why they're looking to go to a state facility bond. So it would be $14 billion that they would be putting, uh, forward, you know, for that bond. So what happens is it's, it's like a first come, first served. So when you get your application in, if there's state facility money available, your application is in, whoever's first is going to get their application funded. So the longer we would wait past the time when a bond would pass, the potential that they would not have any funding remaining to be able to provide us with state matching funds. So that's why, you know, again, it's important that, you know, we're, uh, close to that same time so that we can make sure we're in line to receive those funds.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? We're good? All right. Thank you, Ms. Ford. And we'll look forward to, uh, some updates on that and maybe feasibility in the future. All right. Next one, full day transitional kindergarten, uh, TK and kindergarten update. Mr. Dubrowski.
Thank you. I, I have for you an analog, no picture, no presentation, 1980s level update. Um, but I just wanted to let you know that we had the first of two optional professional development sessions on May 18th. Uh, and that was a, a full day of, of planning and professional development for our TKK teachers. It was attended by about 50% of our teachers. Um, in the afternoon, they worked with their site administrators to collaborate on the logistics for scheduling and support and just be prepared for August. Um, there's another section, session scheduled for July 27th. So teachers had the option of going to this one or that one. And principals have submitted their instructional minutes. So those are all prepared for full day TK and K and ready to go for, for August. There will be a follow-up meeting scheduled with the full day TKK committee, um, in early September so that they can, they can talk through any questions or concerns that may come up in the first 20 or 30 days. And then in, in addition, um, you know, teachers have been making orders based with the, the funding that was given to them. And we also identified a system-wide need for a, like an instructional kitchenette sys, system that, and those have been ordered district-wide for all TK and K teachers. So the, the hope is that those will be received and in place before school starts. So that's what's been going on since the last board meeting in the full day TKK preparedness arena.
Thank you, Mr. Dubrowski. Any questions, comment? Trustee Bradford.
When you say instructional kitchenette, is that something functional or a play kitchenette?
A, a play kitchenette, not a functional kitchenette. Yes.
My daughter-in-law was a kindy teacher and she said they really missed those in their classrooms.
Trustee Navarro.
Without saying names, I think some of my family had a great time spending that money to, to get some of that. It was like Christmas, I guess, when she got back to summer school and all the,
I'm glad.
All the Amazon boxes and everything.
Christmas in May. I like it.
Christmas is in May. Where are we at status-wise? I, I didn't, I don't remember if we had a timeline that for, um, either assigning and confirming that we were going to have enough, um, uh, aides for the first two to three weeks at that, right? For TK and K.
But if, when you say aides, if you mean the instructional aides that are in the TK classes, I believe those are in the hiring process. But I, what you, what I think you may mean is the extra support for the first 20 days.
Yes, that's what, that's what I mean. Yes.
Each, each school site is handling that in their unique way, based on their needs, the number of classes they have, the staff that they have. And so all of our principals are prepared to do that. I, I couldn't say, you know, exactly how many or who at each individual site because it varies across the board.
So when you say each principal does it by needs, then we're not 100% guaranteed that every TKK will have?
No, we are. We are. But, but at say Pacific Avenue, it may need, it may be one or two employees, whereas at Sunny Slope, it may be six or seven. So.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dubrowski. Onto number four, uh, other administrative reports and communications. Dr. Hanson.
Yes, we just have our Harupa J, or the JUSD snapshot to share with the board this evening as we wrapped up graduation season.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. Would like to ask the board if we can take five minutes, a little break. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
E, public hearing session number one, whole public hearing for the 2023, 2024 proposed local control and accountability, accountability plan, Mr. Dabrowski.
All right. So as you know, ed code requires that honor before July 1st each year, the board needs to have a public hearing for the LCAP and budget, followed by an adoption meeting at least a few weeks later. And so tonight is the budget hearing portion and Mr. Blake, the Director of Funding and Program Accountability is here with a fantastic slideshow for you. So no pressure, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, good evening. I'm happy to be here and, and Robert, I know you, you saw some of this at DAC and the DLAC meeting, but really, I just want to start off by saying, and just seeing these celebrations here tonight and and just, it's such a privilege in my role to be able to be part of the facilitation of, of the LCAP because we get to be involved in with a lot of different partners in this work for our students. And so just to start off that I just feel really privileged. So thank you for letting me be here to talk about it. As you're well aware, if you, when you reviewed the LCAP and as the attachment here, it's pretty comprehensive and can be a little cumbersome. So what I tried to do in this presentation was pull out the key areas to highlight for you. So you understood what is changing for this coming year in our LCAP. So, but I'm open to any questions that you may have, and I can try to answer them or give you an answer later. So let's just start off norming ourselves, even though LCAP has been around now for a while, just it's, if you're not in the weeds of it like I am, it can be, the nuances can be long forgotten in a year. So really the idea of the LCAP is that there's goals and outcomes that we have, and it needs to be based on metrics or data that's identifying needs of students that we have, and that we're going to build this budget and the budget's coming from what we call supplemental and concentration money. And how that supplemental and concentration money in LCFF is generated is by our unduplicated students. And so we hear that often, right? Unduplicated, our UPP, and just as a reminder, our unduplicated students are our students who are low income, who are English learner, or foster youth. Those are the three student groups that are, that are, we are receiving supplemental concentration money for. And I'll go a little bit deeper into that in just a little bit. There's a, it's pretty extensive and the monitoring of that. And I'm sure you've seen over, for those of you that have seen the LCAP over the years evolved, the level of accountability that the state is placing on this process is, is growing. And so there's a burden for us to look at what is, what is working, what is not working, what do we need to do to respond year by year to the needs of the students. But just as a caveat to understand where we are in the LCAP process, this is going to be year three of the three-year plan. So you would, you would expect that there are some modifications, but this really is to be looked at as a 2021 through 2024 LCAP that we annually are revising, and this is year three of the final three-year plan. I talked about how it's a privilege to be able to facilitate this process, and it really is about being able to partner. And so the state has required us to partner with, with different groups to gather input in, and they're up there in, in what I thought were cool little boxes to try to present that rather than a bulleted list. But you can imagine it's, it's all of our, our staff, our teachers, our students, our community, district leadership, our association, CSEA and NEA Harupa. We of course, work extensively with the District Advisory Council, DAC and DLAC, but also it comes from this, from the site level as well. And I think that's important to keep in mind that there is alignment. The LCAP, the school, the school sites know their students the best. They develop school plans and our LCAP is aligned to these needs that we've identified from the school sites. And we've built SIPSA's school plans and LCAPs around three overarching goals that I'll get into. And we do also partner and seek input from SOPA for, to make sure that we are properly servicing students with disabilities. So as an overview, there's eight state priorities, and that was on that backslide there. And you see the priorities when you think about the dashboard, when you think about the, the ways that we're reporting, those are around the eight priorities. So as a district, we are right about 81% of our students that are unduplicated, meaning they are either low income, English learner, or foster youth, one or more of those, of those groups. It's, it's roughly in supplemental concentration money for this coming year, the 23, 24 year will be roughly 68 million that we receive that you see actions in the LCAP supporting. Now, if you notice that last box, the next box says four goals, and I just a minute ago said three goals. Well, there's a fourth goal that is, that is coming into the LCAP this year, and that's a requirement by the state for certain districts. And I'll go into why we have a fourth goal. And there are 63 actions underneath these four goals in the LCAP. So I mentioned that I wanted to just kind of take a broader, a broader view of pulling out some of the main things that are changing. I do want to point out though, that if you were wanting to look a little deeper into some of the nuances under each goal that are changing, on, for goal one on page 60, so each goal, there's a section that tells you what is changing about that goal. So our goal one is on page 60, goal two is on page 74, and goal three is on page 83, and I can share those with you later. But in case you, in case you want to kind of just get the snapshot of all what's changing, it goes into more detail on those pages. But if we look at goal one, under our action, so our actions are not changing, but the, the way we are implementing and the revisions that we took to these actions are changing based off the needs of students. So I think that you would see that clearly with the action 1.1, our standards-aligned curriculum, we're really shifting away from a guided reading integration to what we call science of reading, which is the idea of this word recognition and, and language comprehension through this, this process. And it's starting to really take root in our, with our literacy support teachers and, and others. And there's cohorts going through with some of the work with RCOE, and it's a very comprehensive two-year process. But that's, that's one of the revisions we took into goal, action 1.1. For action 1.2, under professional development, of course, that's a key thing that we know we have to leverage professional development to keep our, our teachers, you know, best prepared they can be. We've added a GATE certification, and that's an area that has taken an increased emphasis to, to, you know, engage students in a different way. If we went down to action 1.13, elementary support teachers, you'll see that we added a literacy support teacher and a math support teacher at Del Sol to support the middle school students. The nuance of a K8 school necessitated an additional position there to support students who are continuing in the K8 setting there. Action 1.19, and this has been brought to the board, but there's a, a new committee. And I think that's something that as a district, we should feel very proud of is just the engagement that we have with our educational partners and the Partners for Inclusive Education, the PI Committee is in, in effect to support students with disabilities. So we've made sure that we capture that in there. Action 1.24, we added an assistant principal at New Wave Vista High School, as, as you're well aware, but that's a revision for this next year in our LCAP. And, and action 1.35, that's our English language, English learner services. And we, you've heard about the approach coming up for this next year with QTEL, Quality Teaching of English Learners with WestEd, and that's a, that's a big component of that action. For dual immersion, we added that Miraloma Middle is now part of that process. And of course, we, with their Spanish teacher coming on this next year to keep that pathway going from Pedley. And then we've increased West Riverside for first grade. And last one I was going to pull out from action or from goal one was action 43, and that was for an increase of an assistant principal at Del Sol, now that they have two APs. Under goal two, for school and student safety, we, there is an additional campus supervisor and activity supervisor at Del Sol that was added. So that's a revision that you'll see for action eight. And then finishing off with goal three, we've added restorative practices training that's going to be gunned to be implemented with front office staff to equip them and support them and, and how they are interacting and supporting students who come into the office. But also under parent trainings that FAFSA is also, the trainings we did for FAFSA is also expanding to support the California Dream Act application. And that we've added strengthening families also to the list. And you know, the, the LCAP is as comprehensive as it can be, but you all are well aware that there are many things that live outside of LCAP, but are very much related to our LCAP services. And I think that's really important that we keep that in mind, especially in this, this place we find ourselves with many plans being implemented over the course of the past couple of years with one-time monies. And so it's important that we just always keep that in mind, that this is as comprehensive as it can be, but there are many other things that support the work we do. I'll go now to the new required goal. This is goal four. So this is a new goal for us in our LCAP. And this comes based off, well, let me read the goal to you first, so then you can, and then I'll explain how we got here. So goal four is students experiencing homelessness will achieve equitable academic performance, academic engagement, and be provided supportive school conditions and climate. So the key thing there is that there's a specific student group that goal four is designed for, and as far as students experiencing homelessness. And why did that have to come? It, it came out of, from the dashboard, that's reporting how certain student groups are performing. Students who are experiencing homelessness for the past three years have been the, one of the lowest performing student groups in our district. And from the acad, so I don't, you know, there's a, there's a whole technical guide to how this works, but really what you, what is important to understand is that there's multiple areas, multiple priorities. Remember the eight I mentioned, there's multiple priorities that they are performing differently than our students as a whole. They are, so in the yellow box, that's what, that's how our students with, students experiencing homelessness performed on the dashboard this year. So we can see the academic indicators being very low. They did have a medium graduation rate, so they didn't, that wasn't one of the areas that they were qualified for, but the academics were. And then, like all of our student groups, chronic absenteeism being very high was a second priority then that qualified them for that. And the suspension rate was high. So we, the state has a expectation on districts now that if that student group or a specific school, but for, in our case, it was a student group for three years or more, required differentiated assistance, another acronym DA, you may have heard us talk about that over the years, but that we have to have a, a new goal for them in our LCAP. So we have four actions that we have determined would be supplemental. So as a, something that I want to call out is that our supports for students who are experiencing homelessness, the, the foundation of that isn't changing. These are additional supports. So this isn't like we're removing stuff here. So now we can just do these four. We're going to enhance the supports we have for students in experience homelessness with these four actions. So the four actions are, action one is about a staff member, and we haven't quite identified exactly what that role will be, but the idea would be about a staff member who is focused on students who are experiencing homelessness and what we call case management. How are they academically doing? How are their, how is their social, emotional development? What are their needs? As we know that families who might find themselves in this situation, their needs are very diverse and very unique and personalized to their situation. So this person would be responsible for managing the, the ways to support students. Action two. Uh, action two is identification. We also are aware that there's a level of stigma that comes with, with this and that there might be students who are experiencing homelessness. And now, and that definition is, is quite broad by the state. It, it doesn't mean what maybe a lot of us think, meaning they have no home. It means there's a lot of different ways that, that a student can be experiencing homelessness. But, um, we realize that there is an increased need to identify those students in a, in a, in a respect, a respectful and safe way, and that we had, we need to work on that to provide the supports to them. So that's another action that we're going to do. And that's really coming down to providing sites with additional resources to, to help identify those students and identify resources to support them. And then you see action three is attendance teams. That's something that's been in place this year and we would enhance the attendance team to be looking at those students who have been identified as experiencing homelessness and specifically monitoring their attendance and seeing what supports could be provided that maybe are more out of the box than we might provide to the general, general population. And then lastly, action four is about extended learning opportunities and really looking at, are there partnerships with organizations or with our teachers that we could provide services to support, um, academics at the school site, but we even are having conversations and looking into taking that to perhaps where it's more, most convenient for the student. And cause sometimes after school for a student, um, who might be experiencing homelessness is not the most convenient. So we are looking at if we can, you know, bring it out more into the community and, and if that's a, if that's a reality that we can bring. So that's our goal four. So that's my synopsis of this, of this pretty comprehensive document, um, to try to help you understand what's changing for this year. The main thing is a new LCAP goal four, um, that's coming on board. And again, this is year three, so then next year we will revisit. And inevitably the state will have a new template that will capture the process differently, um, for that new revision that will, that they're requiring. And so we'll, we'll come back again next year with, with a new three-year cycle. So, but I'm open to any, any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. And I just wanted to say to my colleagues, so I, this is the first year I've been to a DAC meeting since the old way. You know, the restricted funding, it's a whole lot different. I mean, it's a lot of parent engagement and, uh, I think Mr. Blake, you do a great job and, uh, Mrs. Gomez, it's a great job on the D-LAC side. And I'm sure Mrs. Regal would, would agree with me on that. And so I'll open it up to questions. Any questions? Trustee Bradford.
Okay, um, I have a question about the number of homeless students we have. My notes I had in the past that we had about point six percent, which would be like maybe a hundred and twenty students. How many do you think we have?
It's a little under two hundred, like close to two hundred.
I'm happy to answer that.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. So as of April sixteenth, we have a total of a hundred and thirty-two.
Okay.
And the majority, we have a seventy-eight in grade seven through twelve. That has the largest chunk and then fifty-four in, um, kindergarten through sixth grade.
Do, do we know under what conditions they're living?
We don't, but I can tell you, give you some more definition to what constitutes, um, a student that's homeless. So they could be, um, sharing housing with other, with other families. They can be living in motels, hotels, trailer parks or shelters. They are children who are living in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, um, substandard housing, bus or train stations or similar settings. That could be one of them too as well. Yes. So as far as your question, um, trustee Bradford, I don't have, yeah.
Mrs. Sanchez told me one of her students died of exposure. That breaks my heart. That shouldn't happen here. I know it's not our fault, but it shouldn't happen here. And I know Mr. Campos does a fabulous job of taking care of our students. Okay, um, Mr. Blake, I thought I had written down my questions that I emailed to you, but apparently they were on my computer at home. So
I wrote them down.
I know you did. Would you please answer them for us?
Yeah, uh, you had asked a question regarding the, the distance from, was it the distance from standard?
Yes, thank you, thank you. How do we explain that? Because it sounded, it was under the, what are the improvements? And it didn't sound like it was an improvement.
Right. Because we're talking about how certain student groups, let's say are, uh, negative fifty-two on their ELA from distance from the standard. So really what I think
What is, how do you measure that? And, and would you please put that into? I mean, I'm an intelligent person, but it made me feel really stupid.
Don't, it's, it's a little convoluted in how it gets presented.
Thank you.
So the idea would be
Please translate.
In, in the state on the CASP, there's four levels.
Okay, put it in context first of how it was, how it was described in, okay.
Yeah. So when we're talking about a distance from the standard, they're saying a level three is a standard that we want all students to be at grade level. So for example, if a fourth grade student takes the CASP in ELA, the state test in ELA.
Okay. And for anybody who, are, are we still live streaming this? Would you please explain for anybody who may be watching from home, translate your acronyms?
So CASP is about, yeah, sure. It's a CASP is a state assessment that students in third through eighth grade take in ELA and math and subgrade science, and then eleventh grade as well.
English language arts, yes.
Yes, and math.
Okay.
And those students take it from third grade to eighth grade annually. Let's say a fourth grader, we have, uh, the state has identified a level that a student would be proficient, level three. So that becomes your zero, if you will.
Okay.
So when we say a distance from standard, that's, and we have a student group that's a negative fifty-two points. That means they are fifty-two points below that level of proficiency that the state's identified. So when we say we, in part of our narrative, we talk about that was a progress, that there was improvement for some student groups because they moved closer to the standard. They were, they had a more negative, uh, performance prior and they moved closer to that standard mark.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So they are, it is an improvement, even though it says that it is X number of points from standard.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Ditwiler.
And adding on to that, when we say outperformed, we mean outperformed the district norm?
Correct.
Okay. And on, um, I think I have different numbers than you have, because I'm looking at page eight, the one thirty-eight. Over the top, it says conditions and climate. We're talking about the suspension rate indicator.
Okay.
African-American, foster and homeless and students with disabilities. If I recall correctly, this was in a few last year as well. Have we made any progress here?
Specifically in terms of the suspension rate?
Correct.
We, we maintain the same level because there's ranges for these levels. So the suspension rate for this year is higher than it was a prior year. But I think the thing to keep in mind about that is the conditions of learning were very different coming back from virtual that first year. So this was more of a in-person normal year. So we did increase from the prior year of suspension rate, but we still stayed in that same level of, of, um, identification.
Like a tax bracket.
Correct.
Okay.
There's a spread of a percentage and it, and it even varies based off whether it's an elementary school, middle school, they give a little higher percentage allowance for suspension, high school is different. And then the district has a, a different percentage that we fall into. So it's very technical in, in how they determine the levels. That's why I think they tried to some, simplify it this year with the bars and, you know, the kind of the cell phone bar thing and trying to simplify that. But it's a lot of technical data behind it.
So it's still an issue for us.
I would say there's still, there's still room for, for improvement. Yes.
Absolutely.
Trustee tomorrow. Uh, when it comes to metrics, can you explain to the public what the, where we get the baseline from? And then the desired outcome, when is that decided on? Has that been, does that update every year because of what the outcomes are at? Or because it seems where we're at year two on a lot of these and where we want to be on the outcome is way, way, way big, you know, differential. And then like, is it, it's a wish list, like where, 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 where does that desired outcome come from? And how often do we update that through the yearly process?
Well, I think my answer would have to have an asterisk with it because if we had not developed this LCAP, the first year of this LCAP was, was when we were still in this hybrid setting. Okay. So we established a baseline based off our current numbers at that time. And then we set goals, but the unknowns were so extreme at that time. We didn't know what we were, you know, what our students were coming back with. And so I think you see that, I think you see it highlights the needs that are still there and the, and the, the work that's ahead of us still from that. Now, if this was not involving the pandemic, then you would say, okay, your baseline's that first year of your LCAP. And you set a, a reasonable goal that you think you can achieve over the coming three years of that cycle.
Yeah.
So I think, I think you'll see, um, I think that's why there's a variance different than maybe prior LCAPs.
And I'll just add to that, that as, as you'll recall, when they released the dashboard, they released only the cell phone bars as opposed to the prior way of looking at it where there was status as well as change from the prior year or baseline. This year they only released status. So they didn't look at the year before when we were in virtual learning as a baseline. So, um, next year we will have this year as a baseline or last year's baseline. And then this year as, you know, that, that change year. So we would like, when you look at suspensions, we would be confident that this year we improved our suspension rate versus last year, the first year back from the pandemic.
From that one. Okay. Yeah. Cause it's, it's hard to use the pandemic as a baseline when we, with grades and expansion, you know, missing classes and all that because of, because of that. Okay.
And the state doesn't allow us to re-benchmark our goals that we had in the LCAP. They could only be re-benchmarked every three-year cycle. So we couldn't like establish a new goal now in year two, hoping that, that goal is established that year one. And then you just show your progress towards
So what happened in the world, we had to, we had to stick with that. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Blake. And I think the last thing I'd say to my colleagues is, um, uh, maybe on a bigger picture is any chance we get to talk to our legislators about education? And we can talk about these things and, you know, kind of help that a little bit. So thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Ross, anything else? Dr. Ditwiler, another question?
Is that why we still have goals for things that are, have been disbanded? There were several tests that aren't there anymore.
Correct.
And we still have goals.
Correct.
Cause the state says we have to have goals.
Even if like, you'll see, for example, uh, first year we had an ICE station that we were using. And we, we changed that. We're no longer using that assessment. We're using NWEA now. We're required to keep that on for the three-year cycle. And we just have to put some statement that we're not like using that. So, yeah, it's, it's their way to try to make it transparent to the, because the LCAPs memorializing a process, right? So they want that to stay on there. So you can see the process over a three-year period.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Blake. Public hearing. All right. So, um, at this time I'll open a public hearing on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed local account, local control and accountability plan, the LCAP. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Seeing none.
None, okay. All right. Seeing none. This public hearing on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed local control and accountability plan, LCAP is hereby closed. All right. And on to E two. Uh, hold public hearing on proposed district budgets for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. So, um, and this is the public hearing part, portion of the budget. And as Mr. Blake indicated, the same as with the LCAP, we'll be bringing the budget back for adoption on June twenty-sixth. So, um, I'll just give you a, a overview of what is happening with our budget. So, um, I'm going to start off with the May revision as we always do, because we build our budget off of what the governor proposes in the May, in the May revise, because we have to have our budget approved before the state actually approves their budget. Uh, and then I'll go into our, uh, how that would impact JUSD's budget and the assumptions, you know, that we made for our multi-years. So if we start off with the state revenues, um, looking at state revenues, we're in a very different position than we were last year. Last year, this time we had sixty-nine billion dollars in surplus. And this year we, uh, right now we're looking at an estimated thirty-one point five billion budget shortfall. So a very different position, but there's still good news for, for education. So, um, and I do want to mention the legislative analyst office, they're actually indicating that they believe this is, it's going to be eleven billion dollars lower, which is again, another reason why, you know, we just need to, to be, um, prudent, you know, in, in what we're looking at. Um, a lot of this has to do with the stock market. As you know, the majority of the, uh, income for, for the state of California, if that, the revenue comes from personal income tax. So when the stock market isn't doing well, some of our high earners aren't doing as well in California. And that means that the overall, uh, revenues come in lower. The other element that is really unique to this year is that the extension of the tax filing deadline. So normally in April, we have a really good sense of how much revenue is going to be coming into the state because you have your April fifteenth tax filing deadline, since that now has been extended to October. Um, really a budget is being, uh, built on unknown tax, uh, tax receipts. So we will, you know, know more, but we won't know more until about mid-November, um, to have real actual numbers. So it's been a difficult, uh, road, I think, for both the governor and the legislature to, to build this budget. The good news is the May revise, um, does invest in education. So we're really, uh, happy about that. Protecting education by funding the, uh, the COLA, which is an eight point two-two percent statutory COLA, which would go to the LCFF, which will help schools. Um, also continuing programs, and I listed the programs that were, that were, um, brought forth last year and continuing to fund those programs. But the one area that the governor, uh, has proposed is to reduce some of the one-time funding and that helps to pay for the ongoing cost. A little concerning when we, we think of one-time funding being used to pay for ongoing costs like LCFF COLA. However, um, I'm sure there is a plan. Uh, so, and then when we look at the reductions in the, in the one-time funding, we're looking at a reduction of arts, music, instructional materials discretionary block grant and of, of a one point eight billion across the state and then two point five billion for the learning recovery emergency block grant. And I'll talk a little bit more about those in a few minutes. So just in general, state revenues, even though, um, revenues are down, proposition ninety-eight minimum guarantee between two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four is actually going up. So it actually increases the minimum guarantee and that's because they are funding that eight point two-two percent COLA. So, um, so that's again, good news, you know, for us. But if you, you notice, you can see from the governor's January budget proposal to the, where that red line is there, to the two thousand twenty-three, uh, sorry, to the, um, May revision for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, it's a two billion dollar reduction. So, uh, kind of keeping that theme, this is the difference between the January budget proposal and the May revision. So LCFF funding increase of five point oh four billion was the proposal at the governor's budget in January. For the May revise, it's four point oh four billion. However, most of that has to do with declining enrollment across the state and declining ADA, which means that there's not as much funding needed to be able to fund, um, the LCFF. So there's still funding, planning to fund it, as you can see there with the statutory COLA at the eight point two-two percent COLA. You'll also notice that, you know, prop, uh, prop ninety-eight minimum guarantee does what's called a true-up. It looks back two years. And then it trues up those funds based on tax receipts that come in. So when we look at that and you see a little bit of a bump in the twenty-one, twenty-two, um, so it's a little bit of additional funding there for twenty-two, twenty-three, prop ninety-eight, there is, um, a slight decrease of about two hundred million. And then in twenty-three, twenty-four, um, there is, um, uh, sorry, in twenty, sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four, then there was the decrease of the two billion that I talked about earlier. And again, the arts and music instructional materials, there's a change there. Uh, governor originally proposed a one point two billion dollar reduction in that, uh, one-time money program. And then in the May revision, it was an additional point six billion. Learning recovery, uh, no reduction in the governor's original budget proposal, but two point five billion in the May revision. So what does that all mean to our budget? So what does that all mean to our budget? So when we look at our multi-year, um, when we look at our multi-year, uh, budget, we have to look at assumptions. So we have to go with what we know currently, and then the out-years are what we anticipate, you know, that we will see and with the information that we currently have. So LCFF, you can see that we are being funded by it with two-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-seven million in, um, LCFF. Our COLA is the eight-point-two-two percent. Our single, uh, year unduplicated pupil percentage, which is what, uh, Mr. Blake just talked about. And that's our, that's our programs that go into that supplemental concentration funding that, uh, funds the LCAP. So that's eighty-two-point-four-eight percent. And then we have our projected total enrollment, our projected total funded ADA. And the reason that you'll see, if you do the numbers and you look at the capture rate, the projected capture rate based on our cat, our actual, um, projected enrollment, you're not going to come up with seventeen thousand seven hundred. And the reason for that is because remember, we have the option for average daily attendance to, uh, fund fund our attendance one of three ways, either prior year, if that's more, you know, uh, if if our enrollment goes up and our ADA goes up and it's higher in the prior year, we can use that year. If it's, um, if the current year is higher, we can use that year. Or we can do a three-year rolling average. So, um, so for us, we are looking at the three-year rolling average, which will be seventeen thousand seven hundred ADA. But you'll notice that in twenty-four, twenty-five, that drops significantly. And that's because that hold harmless year, where our ADA didn't drop, they allowed us to use prior year, that hold harmless year is going to drop off of that three-year rolling average. So that's why twenty-four, twenty-five goes down so much. Um, as we talked about, STIRS and PERS continue to, uh, go up. Uh, STIRS is statutorily set at the nineteen-point-ten, but Cal-PERS can be adjusted, and we get those numbers typically in May of each year, April or May of each year. And then we, uh, contribute four million dollars to our deferred maintenance program. And that is, you know, to keep our facilities in repair and, you know, working order. And then we also require three percent reserve, which we have built into that. And then I do have the reduction of the one-time block funds. So what that that reduction would mean to us is fifteen-point-seven million dollars, reducing those funds. And just so you you're aware, but we've already received that funding. So that would be, uh, and and so have all the other districts. So there, um, already is, uh, there's conversations between the Senate and the legislature, and they actually just passed right before we came into this meeting. I received an email. And they passed the, um, the the Assembly and the Senate passed their budget, which is now going on to the governor. And they have actually pulled way back on that one time, uh, pulling that one time money back from us. So right now, instead of the one-point-eight billion, uh, and the two-point-five billion, they're looking at two hundred million and five hundred million. So that'll be a significant reduction. So we will not be seeing that large of a reduction. But we have built our budget on this, so I wanted you to be aware of that. I would imagine the governor is going to be very receptive to that. So looking at our enrollment and our average daily attendance, you can see that, you know, since two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we have declined by about nine-hundred-and-sixty-four students. Um, and of course, our average daily attendance has not bumped back up to our pre-pandemic levels. So, uh, again, that's something that, you know, we are projecting for, that we will continue to experience some lower average daily attendance than what we would consider as normal. So looking at the local control funding formula, which is the bulk of where we receive our funds, uh, with seventy-one, uh, sorry, seventy-one percent of that fund, LCFF funding coming in as base funding. So, you know, we're funded on each grade span, so we get a certain amount for each kindergarten TK through third-grade student. You get a certain amount for each four through, um, uh, sixth-grade student, and then a certain amount for seven, eight, and nine, twelve. So based on that, um, we, seventy-one percent of that is that base funding. And then with twenty-five percent is the funding that Mr. Blake talked about, that's sixty-eight, roughly sixty-eight million dollars, which is our, um, funding that we use, and you'll see in the LCAP throughout the LCAP for those programs. And then we get about four percent for add-ons. And I provided just a little list there at the bottom of what those add-ons are, which is, uh, grade span adjustment, targeted instructional improvement grant, and transportation, and we get a little bit of an add-on for transitional kindergarten. So I also wanted to provide an update on the one-time money, because as you know, some of those expenditure deadlines, um, are coming up. So I wanted to make sure that you're aware that we still have those budgeted in. And we are planning to expend those funds. So you can see that, um, our balance for the expanded learning opportunity grant is eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Uh, we, uh, we have a timeline to extend that by September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, and we have a plan, uh, to do that. And then S R three is thirty-point-eight million dollars. And we also have a plan to extend those funds, which also are two thousand twenty-four. We, uh, part of that is the classroom furniture that's, you know, on the board agenda, uh, tonight. We also have shade structures that were involved, so quite a bit of large, um, projects that will expand those funds. So those are all currently budgeted. And then our arts, music, instructional materials, we talked about that a couple of times already tonight. So you can see that, um, that's how much the cuts would have been to us. You know, the five, five-point-six million for the arts, and it would have been, uh, um, uh, thirteen-point-one million would have been the budget, um, had it been the learning recovery. So. But the good news is it looks like that will not happen, and so we will be in a much better, uh, position. So just looking at our budgeted revenues for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, you can see that the, uh, almost seventy-five percent of our funding comes from LCFF. Another twelve percent from our, from federal funds. And that's a little bit higher than normally would, but again, we still have some federal revenue, um, that is one-time revenues. And then other state, um, resources, and then those are also some one-time monies that are from the state. And then we have other other local resources. And I broke down what the actual funding amounts are in that left-hand corner in that little table there. And then on our budgeted expenditures, you know, and again, this is our unrestricted and restricted, you know, our general fund. So on our expenditures, you can see that we have, um, about seventy-one percent of, um, of our funding actually is going, our expenditures are going for people, for personnel. And then the rest of that is books and supplies and operational costs. Uh, and you can see that we have, uh, quite a bit of, uh, in services and, um, operating costs. And and that is a lot of the the books and supplies and services and operating costs. Those, a lot of that is the one-time money and spending those one-time monies down. So then if we look at our multi-year projection and our ending fund balances, which is what's important, because we have to make sure that we meet our required three percent reserve. And so we look at our projected beginning fund balance, and that's that top blue bar at the top, and this is in millions. And you can see that we're projecting, um, to have a beginning fund balance of one-hundred-and-twenty-point-nine million. And then we have our LCFF revenue, um, and then all of our federal revenues we just talked about, and then our expenditures. Um, and then with that, you can see that we're actually have a net decrease in fund balance of twenty-one-point-seven million. So this, this would be considered deficit spending. However, the important thing to point out is that we are deficit spending because we we have to spend down those one-time funds. So we received those one-time funds. Last year, we recorded them on the books. We're carrying those over, and we have to spend them. So that's why we're spending more, um, you know, our expenditures are higher than our revenues. And then the same thing, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six, because some of these one-time funds go for multiple years. You know, they go out to two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. So we are spending that, spending down those restricted resources. But we're meeting our required three percent reserve. And we are over our required reserve, and you can see that at the bottom, uh, there with the fifteen-point-three million uh, in the budget year, and then fourteen million and fourteen-point-three million in the out-years. So we're in a a very good position with a healthy ending fund balance. So, um, some risks, and, you know, we talked a little bit, uh, about these, but the, you know, the governors, um, the Senate, the Assembly, you know, if revenues do not come in, um, if they're, if they're, uh, less than the thirty-one-point-five billion-dollar, uh, def- deficit or, um, shortfall that they believe that they will have, then there will likely be some more reductions to district funds. So we just need to be prepared for that. And again, we have a healthy ending fund balance, so we are prepared. Um, and then actual state revenues, we're not going to know until mid-November. So once we have that information, we likely will see, uh, see that come forward in whatever, whatever fashion it might be. I'm hoping that it will be, uh, revenues will be better than expected. But if they're not, we'll likely see that at the governor's January budget proposal in two thousand twenty-four. And, um, and then for the district budget, just declining enrollment, you know, monitoring that, ensuring that we're, you know, taking that into consideration, the average daily attendance. Mrs. Santos Lee has been working diligently to, you know, ensure that, you know, we're doing everything possible to keep our attendance up. Our, our principals are doing amazing jobs, you know, incentivizing, you know, kids coming to school and running great programs at the schools. So, um, you know, we really hope we see that, you know, continue to grow. And we did see it increase this year from what it was of the prior year. So, um, and as Dr. Ditwiler said, you know, it's important in two ways. You know, obviously, we're funded that way, but the other element is we need our kids in school. They need to be learning. So it's important that we get them there every day. And then, um, and then just, um, uh, cuts, you know, to already provided funds. But again, it looks like that's not going to be as deep of cuts as we thought, so we're, we're happy about that. And then just making sure that we're keeping track of of our funding and where it's going and maintaining those healthy ending fund balances. So we will bring this back for adoption on June twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Any questions?
Trustee Navarro.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford, for the presentation. I always wondered why this time of year I seem to go to sleep really fast in the weekends.
I think you hurt my feelings.
There's a lot of reading in your eyes. You start going, uh, downhill, uh, eleven o'clock at night. Um, just a few questions. I didn't understand on the enrollment difference between the multi-year assumptions, and then you showed the slide afterwards where the average, the attendance you had in the seventeen thousands, but then we were, we're projecting in eighteen thousands. I just didn't understand the difference between the two slides.
All right, so the funded, the total funded ADA, sorry, the total funded ADA, you're asking about that?
There was just two different slides where there was the, the multi-year assumption, which was like in the seventeen thousands, and then your next slide, which, uh, had the, it wasn't, I think it was before. So yeah, so the difference between this slide and then the one before.
Right, so, so, um, this is actual each year, the, the, uh, estimated, um, ADA
Okay.
that you see at the bottom there, uh, and it's by grade span, and you can see the estimated ADA at the, at the bottom. So that is what we're estimating that we will, that we will have. However, the seventeen-seven-hundred is based on a three-year rolling average. So we have to look back those three years. So we look back at the, uh, two, uh, two thousand twenty-two, or sorry, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two year and the two thousand twenty-twenty-one year. And then we would provide the average of that. That's where we come up with the seventeen thousand seven hundred.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's why those numbers won't match, because we're not taking a single year and only using that.
Okay.
We could do that if we find that our average daily attendance is higher. So, so if we get into twenty-three, twenty-four, and our average daily attendance goes back up to ninety-five percent, we can use that as opposed to using the three-year rolling average. It's whatever is is higher, we were able to fund, to use for our funding purposes.
Okay. Uh, under expenditures, what is capital outlay? And it wasn't a big budget item. I just.
So anything that's over, any individual item that's over seventy-five hundred dollars, it has to be put into a capital outlay expenditure, because we basically have to record that as an asset.
Okay.
Some type, and we have to, uh, keep an inventory of it.
Okay.
So that's capital outlay. So those are big projects typically.
Okay. And and lastly, it wasn't on the slideshow, but I I had some questions. I didn't email you. Under balances, the health and welfare pool for the certified staff went down over three years. Like, it was projected to the three and a half million, and then somehow it's two years down to seven hundred thousand.
Right, so what hap-
Everything else seemed to be steady except for the certified, yeah.
So, um, so what happens is it's a projection of, you know, more, um, uh, as our, uh, as we have younger teachers that come in, and they're single teachers, and then they get families. There's a projection that as, um, uh, as more of those teachers progress through their career, we will see them go into like a family plan.
Okay.
And the family plans cost more, so that means that that pool will be, uh, reduced
Okay.
more. And so we just, we kind of just look at, and we, we do kind of our own little actuarial analysis of what we believe will be the adjustments in the plans.
Okay, okay. And then lastly, under the lump sum, uh, summary allocation, it, when it was like, you know, this, a certain amount per student, is that something standard for the state, or did we come up that?
What part of that? I'm sorry.
Uh, the, it was under the lump sum, uh, supply allocation, um. I had some more notes. I'll, I'll email you on that one. I had some more questions on that one, but I just didn't know if that was a standard. I forget what page that. There it is, uh, fourteen of one forty-one. The allocation formulas. I just didn't know where the formulas came from. Where it was twenty-one dollars per student for elementary, twenty-eight for middle school.
Oh, so in our, so each year for operational costs, we provide a, um, a budget allocation per student. So where that, that, where that, where originally started, I'm not sure. Um, but each year, what we do is we add COLA to that. And then that's how much they get per student, just to basically run operations at their school.
Okay.
It's a, it's a base amount, uh, and that comes out to them every February.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Bradford.
You know, we trust your exceptional judgment. Are there any questions that we haven't asked that you would encourage us to do so?
I don't, I mean, I don't think so. I mean, like, you know, we talked about the, um, have, making sure that our ending fund balances are in in a good position to weather, you know, any potential, you know, reductions um, at, you know, at the state level, you know, that would come to us. And other than that, you know, we're going to continue to to monitor our enrollment and to mon- monitor ADA.
Okay. I'm comforted that we always have a good report from our auditors, so I think you do a fabulous job, and thank you.
No, I, not just me. There's a, there's a team behind it. So Mrs. Mrs. Benson is is fantastic at what she does, and she has a whole team of accountants that also helps, so.
And your whole-
Appreciate them.
And your whole team behind you. Thank you.
Trustee Ditwiler.
I just had a, a question about, I think you call it the conversion rate. There were numbers in the mid-nineties. Is that the, the percentage of students who actually show up on a day?
The conversion?
It was on the, the first slide you showed for Trustee Navarro's question. Yeah, that one, a little bit. Capture rate, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. So the capture rate is our ADA rate. So that would be the, like, the ni- ninety-one-point-three percent is what we're anticipating. So, so yes, over the course of a day, the average daily attendance would be ninety-one-point-three percent.
Of the enrollees.
Of the enrollees.
So we're thinking we're going to do something about that thirty-six-point-six percent chronic absenteeism rate.
Yes.
That's going to cap us at, what, ninety-six-point-four?
Yeah, we, yes. So, so, yeah, uh, we actually were, um, for the E2, which is our, our principal apportionment as of April, mid-April. When we reported that, we were right at ninety-one percent this year. So we're anticipating, we're going to have a, we're going to bump up by a, like, a point. So we're anticipating we're gonna have a, we're gonna bump up by like a point three percent for next year. I'm, I'm hoping it'll be more, but that's what we're planning on in the budget. I know that uh Mrs. Santos Lee is planning on a lot more than that, though.
That's true.
Maybe it's a good thing that a few kids are responsible for a lot of it.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, Mrs. Ford, so uh because of the October tax extension, so the current numbers that may revise are estimating before that or assuming those numbers are gonna come in?
They're estimating up to that point. So they believe at this point that even with the tax receipts coming in, when, when we get that, receive the tax receipts in October, it would, that the state will be in a thirty-one point five billion dollar shortfall.
Okay. And the second question I had, so ADA, let's say ADA went up, um, and we already used the rolling average. And it went up, we still use the new number?
We could.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Mrs. Ford and uh, and your team. Great job. All right, so we'll go ahead and um, for this item, we'll uh go ahead and open up a public, public hearing on the proposed district budgets for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Mrs. Worley. Um, so hearing none, this public hearing on proposed district budgets for twenty-twenty. Okay, hold on a second. Do you have a typo here? All right, let me start that again. At this time, I'll open a public hearing on proposed district budgets for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on proposed district budgets for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. All right. Next we got item E-three. Full public hearing on initial negotiations proposal from CS, CSEA Harupa, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, President Garcia. Uh, law and board policy both require that prior to their approval as a basis for negotiations, um, both our proposal to CSEA Harupa for negotiations and CSEA Harupa's proposal to the district um, both be heard in public hearings. So this first public hearing is for CSEA Harupa's proposal to the district as a basis for negotiations and it is recommended the board president open and close said public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I will now open a public hearing on the initial negotiations proposal from CSEA Harupa. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Seeing none at this time, President.
Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing on, on initial negotiations from CSEA Harupa. All right, uh, E-three. Full public hearing on initial negotiations proposal with CSEA Harupa, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, sir. The distinction here is that this is the district's proposal for negotiations with CSEA Harupa and so it is recommended that similarly uh, public hearing be held on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. So I'll now open a public hearing on the initial negotiations proposal with CSEA Harupa. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close this public hearing on initial negotiations with CSEA Harupa. All right.
President Garcia, I had to uh excuse Ms. Worley for a family emergency that she needs to go uh get home to. So we will be doing roll call votes for the rest of the agenda. Just ask that you follow along on, on the computer, we won't be uh putting that up on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. Okay, so now we're on to the approve and accept routine action items by consent. If we could. So if you wanna amend your motion?
Can I make a motion to approve, uh, to pull action item twenty-three zero nine four? Which one is it? Students, the student disability case.
Yep, student dismissal.
Student dismissal, yeah, twenty-three dash zero nine four.
It is uh, I-three, there's a, there's, there's one of the cases there, twenty-three zero nine four. So we're pulling that uh from this agenda for another agenda.
Yeah, the last one on I-three.
Just that one case. Twenty-three zero nine four. So motion by Mr. Tristan Navarro. Second by Trustee Bradford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, we need to do a roll call vote, huh? Roll call vote? Okay, so motion carries four zero. All right. On decay, regular board action items, K-one. Approve initial proposal for negotiations from CSEA Harupa, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. So uh, during the board meeting on May eighth, the board received and reviewed the initial proposal for negotiations from CSEA Harupa. Uh, following the public hearing just a few moments ago this evening, administration recommends that the board approve the initial negotiations proposal from CSEA Harupa as a basis for negotiations for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Thank you.
Motion by Trustee Navarro, second by Trustee Ditwiler. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Ditwiler. Trustee Bradford.
K-one.
Those were all, those were all consent items. We just pulled the student discipline case as noted. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Uh, K-two, approve initial proposal for negotiations with CSEA Harupa, Mr. Brooks.
So again, the distinction here between the two items, this is uh the district's proposal for negotiations with CSEA Harupa. Um, and the, again, the board earlier received and reviewed this initial proposal for negotiations. And now we've held our public hearing and it is recommended that the board approve this proposal as a basis for negotiations.
Move to approve.
So, motion by Trustee Navarro, second by Trustee Ditwiler. Any questions or comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ditwiler. Aye. Trustee Bradford.
Aye.
Trustee Navarro.
Aye.
Trustee, uh, President Garcia.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Uh, K-three, approve purchase of elementary classroom furniture, Mrs. Ford.
So in uh November, the board approved the purchase of flexible student furniture for approximately fifty early adopter classrooms. The feedback has been very, very positive. Um, the early adopters um provided some recommendations for consideration for the, by the elementary classroom furniture task force, which they met to review and with that, with the teacher's input, modifications were made. And so at this time, we are ready to bring forward the rest of the purchases. And the furniture will be purchased using S-R three funds. Two quotes were received uh with Culver Newland pricing of five million, nine hundred, three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. And uh, we would like to include a two hundred thousand dollar contingency for the potential of additional classrooms that may be needed. So um, we are asking the administration of, the administration is recommending that the board approve the use of the Omni Partners Cooperative Agreement and approve the purchase of elementary classroom student furniture from Culver Newland in the amount not to exceed six million, one hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Let's do it.
That much?
That, that translates as move to approve.
And I wholeheartedly second that motion.
Motion by Trustee Bradford, second by Trustee Ditwiler. Any questions or comments?
We've heard fabulous things about it.
That's pretty close aside. Okay, anything else? All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ditwiler. Aye. Trustee Bradford.
Aye.
Trustee Navarro.
Aye.
Trust, uh, President Garcia.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Uh, item K-four, approves the middle of winter twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three release of consolidated application, Mr. Dubrasky.
Thank you. The consolidated application is our application for federal funds, title one, title two, title three and title four. This is a routine item that happens every year. The only thing out of the ordinary this year is we would usually do this in January or February, but the state just now finally got us the information we needed to take this to you, which is why it's so late. So we would approve submittal of the winter twenty-two, twenty-three release of the consolidated application.
Thank you, Mr. Dubrasky.
Move to approve.
Motion by Trustee Navarro.
I'll second that.
Second by Trustee Bradford. Any questions or comments?
Just one.
Trustee Navarro.
Uh, under, what is the authorized reservations? Just explain that portion of that. What is that used for? Uh, page two of five, toward the bottom.
Okay. Two.
Yes.
Would you like to answer that, Mr. Blake?
Yeah. So, kind of one, we have, this is an action that we can, we authorize this to convert, so take it out, this is a reverse principle. We're reverting out for homeless, uh, homeless citizens, um, so we can pull that aside, but the rest is.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ditwiler. Aye. Trustee Bradford.
Aye.
Trustee Navarro.
Aye.
President Garcia.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Item K-five, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-three slash forty, approving the adoption of the public agency's post-employment benefits trust administered by Public Agency Retirement Services, Mrs. Ford.
Um, as you heard earlier this evening from Mrs. Sanders, there's a number of benefits for establishing the post-employment benefits trust. Pension and other post-employment benefits are part of the total compensation um, then, and offered by employers. They're earned during employment, but they're taken after employment has ended. And currently, the district is on a pay-as-you-go approach to funding pension and OPEB or post-employ- employment uh benefits liabilities. While this um, m- meets the funding requirement, so it's fine to do a pay-as-you-go. A trust program is really designed to help a district safely and securely set aside those funds to address and lower the cost of these liabilities and of the ability to earn some, you know, additional interest. Pre-funding into a qualified trust um is a way to um bring higher, a higher rate of return rather than what we would get with the general fund.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Motion by Trustee Navarro, second by Trustee Bradford. Any questions or comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Di- uh Ditwiler.
I've been convinced the point two-five is reasonable, so I'm voting aye.
Trustee Bradford.
Me too.
Trustee Navarro. President Garcia.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Four two. All right. Uh-oh. Four zero, four zero, yeah? What did I say? Okay, four zero, I'm sorry. Yeah. Um, final board member comments, uh, Trustee Navarro, I'll start with you.
Uh, no uh, board committee reports or anything, but I did graduate masters in governance training, so woo-hoo! Uh, that was uh, that was a great experience. I, I think learning a lot um. I wish I could have took it in the first year, but it was still beneficial my third year. I think I still learned a lot of uh new things from that and really getting to talk to other board members throughout the state um. Really made me how blessed we are in this district that we have a team that works together and uh, and a team that knows how to handle the budget and, and, and whatnot, so. Just want to say it was a great opportunity and thanks for the cabinet, for all the hard work you do because it's a blessing to have you guys and a fellow board trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bradford.
My committees have not met. I have nothing more to say except thank you to our deputies.
Thank you. Trustee Ditwiler.
I have no uh committee meetings to report on, but I did get to go to two graduations. And there's nothing like getting smiled at by three hundred eighteen-year-olds. It's the best part of the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ditwiler. And I kind of already talked about the, the DAC and D-LAC earlier and uh, I have nothing else. Uh, Dr. Hanson, any final comments?
No, just, just again, I know, I know I say this often, but it really uh is a testament to your engagement as board members and leaders in the community. I appreciate the questions that were asked, uh, appreciate your attentiveness to, to the information that is being presented. That's um, I know, and I know the community also appreciates it. I want to thank our staff who, who put those presentations together, our assistant superintendents uh, who have guided that work. And so um, again, it's a testament to the work that's being done here in Harupa Unified. I'd also like to, you know, we talked a little bit about uh Measure EE and the dollars that have come in. You've turned two hu- a hundred and forty-four million into over two hundred, over two hundred million dollars in projects. Uh, there's a lot of great work. The work that we have done has elevated the communities, you know, around, surrounding our schools. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done, but I thank our Harupa Valley community for passing Measure EE in twenty-fourteen. Um, and we're, we're so happy to be able to um, you know, really show off the fruits of the, of the labor uh from that bond measure. And then again, to thank our uh Mrs. Ford and our, and our business services staff, you know, we are very, very um well-established with our budget, the, the district is in very, a very solid position. And just the, the presentation that you heard tonight from PARs indicates, you know, our desire to make sure that the district remains fiscally solvent for many years to come. So again, um, it was a wonderful graduation season. This is a great time of the year. It's great to, to be with everybody and see the the, the fruits of our labor as employees of the district. Want to thank our staff, our, our classified staff, our teachers, our administrators, all who, who dedicate their lives and their careers to, to providing an opportunity for our students to gain a fabulous education and, and to be able to witness the end result in graduation. So again, thank you uh to the Harupa Unified School District community uh for all that they do to support our students. And that's it for tonight. Just like to you to stick around and you get some uh, need some signatures.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. One final comment, uh, again, congratulations, Mr. Hernandez. Look forward to seeing you uh as part of the team uh next meeting, so welcome again. And that's it for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for coming and.